Okay, good evening and Happy New Year and welcome to the Select Board meeting for Tuesday, January 2nd, 2024. Time is 6 o'clock. We're here in the Select Board Conference Room here at Town Hall. And this meeting's being recorded. If anyone else is recording the meeting, that's great. Just let Diane know because Jason's not here.
I'm definitely not here.
Oh, there he is. And now he is here. So if anyone is recording the meeting, let Jason know. There he is. So let's go through. Okay, let's go through attendance first. Myself, Chairman Doug Mogul is here in person. Vice Chairman Jason Perone is here on Zoom. Diane Gale Clerk is here in person. CAO Steinhardt is on Zoom. Assistant CAO Signoni is here in person and Lisa Anderson is in the other room, which is kind of a little abull.
Hybrid.
She's literally hybrid. Okay, uh, let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Celeste, would you do the honors tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we'll start with public comments. If anybody has anything that they would like to address to the Select Board that's not on the agenda tonight, now is your opportunity. Is there anyone in the audience with any public comments? Okay, how about on Zoom?
I'm getting something from a Joanne that says she can't see the room. I can see the room when you're talking.
It just disappeared on me and came back.
I can only see Jason and then Carl, when you spoke, I could see you, but I can't see the the room at the town hall.
Yeah, I see. I see it on Doug's.
Hold on.
Town of Southwick Select Board Conference Room. It's right above Doug's head.
No.
Let's try this. Yeah, open that because it's probably getting warm. How about now?
I got it.
Yeah.
I can see it.
Yeah, I can see it now. Thank you.
Anything for you, Joanne and Jason.
Well, thank you very much. It's nice to be appreciated.
Anybody have any public comments?
Nice to see you here today.
Okay, hearing or seeing none, we'll roll into some action items here. We're going to acknowledge payables warrant number 2416B dated 12/27/2023 of last year in the amount of $425,056.28. We'll acknowledge payroll warrant 2413 dated December 19th in the amount of $266.
Shush.
$965.
This time it's Jason's dog. That's not my dog.
No, no, she's a pain in the butt.
Would you tell the dog that the time for public comment has passed? Okay, we need a motion to accept the open session minutes dated December 11th of 2023.
I'll make that motion.
That was a second.
The dog can't second the motion either, bud.
I'll be right back. I'm gonna put her outside.
I second.
Okay, motions made and seconded. Uh, we'll just take the two votes. Doug Mogul and I?
Diane Gale, aye.
Okay. And December 18th Select Board Minutes. Uh, I'll entertain a motion for that.
I'll make that motion to accept the December 18th minutes.
And I will sec- or Jason, you want to second the motion for the December 18th minutes?
I will.
Okay, good. Okay, Doug Mogul and I?
Diane Gale, aye.
Jason Perone, aye.
Okay. Okay, first item of business is, uh, December, week before Christmas, I think it was the 19th-ish, the High Speed Internet Subcommittee voted in a meeting to send a recommendation to their appointing authority, which is the Select Board, for their recommendation that the Town of Southwick enter into an intermunicipal agreement with Westfield Gas and Electric for Whip City Fiber, uh, for the Southwick Municipal Fiber Network. Further, their request is to respectfully request that the Select Board send the task of negotiating said IMA, the details, technical stuff, uh, back to the High Speed Internet Sub to negotiate that, which we'll then send it back to the Select Board for review and uh, discussion and approval. And I see, I thought I saw Mr. Sullivan is online with us tonight as well. So finally, after months of meetings and discussions and presentations and tours and visits, the High Speed Sub is making a recommendation that we work a deal with Whip City Fiber, to be our ISP for the Muni Fiber Network in our town, which makes a ton of sense given their proximity to us and their experience in doing this all over, well, all over Mass at this point. So I'm looking for, um, a motion to accept that recommendation and then, uh, if it pleases the Board to send it back to the High Speed Sub for them to negotiate the IMA, very much like what we did with the sewer deal where it went back to DPW and then it came back to the Select Board for review and approval.
Can you just tell me what the scope of this? Is this an initial IMA? For design and build services or is it the whole thing?
It's gonna be, it would be for design, build, and then probably a several year, because it'll end up probably having to go back to town meeting anyway, but it'll be a several year operation of said network. Does it make sense to have the company that's going to operate it be involved in the design and build so that they know what they're getting? Um, or know what they're signing up to operate?
But, but this is the whole, this is all three parts?
Correct.
Design, build, and then turning it on and providing all the administrative and blah, blah, blah.
Correct, and that'll all be in the eye of it.
Okay.
And that they will, and Doug is correct, there will need to be a supplemental appropriation at a future town meeting in the form of another uh, bond issue, but hopefully those types of funds can start to be coming into play once the take rate starts getting activated and the money start coming in.
And we would only agree to the IMA if we agreed to the price of the design and build as well.
Of course, of course.
Okay.
And then again, it's just for them to, to go and do that legwork. They have several existing contracts in hand that they already, we have ones from towns near and towns far.
Yep.
That have already done it. So we can take kind of what they've already done and put it together for ourselves, then get quotes on the actual network and so on and so forth, but we would like to get something started, um, in earnest because we're gonna start, um, with the poll survey work um, and having an intervenor who's done this before will be beneficial from a cost perspective because they can come in and make some, some arguments on some, say, older polls that ever sourced may already have plans to replace or Verizon already had plans to replace, but they're gonna say, well, you replace it because it's gotta go up another foot. So that, that type of scenario, but we'd like to keep this moving and keep the process going.
I have watched all the meetings and were attempted and I know you're, it's got a great crew and I know you delve deeply into it. So I don't have any issues with that.
Jason?
No, Mr. Mogul, I have none. Uh, again, I've also reviewed several of the meetings and I know your expertise as well first in this, uh, as well as my familiarity with Whip City Fiber, both from being a former customer as well as, you know, municipal employee next door and every town that I've talked to that's, has nothing but great things to say about Whip City Fiber. So, uh, if you're looking for that motion to go forward, you have it.
And I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Uh, it would take a roll call vote. Doug Mogul, aye?
Jason Perone, aye.
Diane Gale, aye.
Great. Acknowledge the Mass Dot Letter Regarding Infrastructure Alotment, the amount of $215,970. Carl?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is supplemental monies that are similar to the, well, what used to be the Chapter 90 process, but the formula was changed so that there could be something that was a little bit more fair to communities that have a lot of, um, miles of road. So they did adjust the formula through a supplemental state budget approval. And I, I believe at some point Randy will be amending the list that he gave to you before on all the different roads so that when you went out and looked at them in your capacity as road commissioners, now he'll, um, look at these new funds and we'll be able to figure out what other project can be programmed with them.
Great. It shouldn't take much to spend $216,000.
No, about 10 minutes.
Yeah, you're being generous. So, and just FYI, this is part of the millionaire's tax, uh, money. So this is, uh, the 4% surtax on taxable income over $1 million be spent on public education and transportation. This letter certifies that your community's fair share apportionment for fiscal year '24 is $215,970. Accept the donation accounts on aging from Stop &amp; Shop for $61 to go into the COA gift account. So this was a letter received from outgoing Executive Director of Senior and Recreation Operations Sullivan. So I need a motion to accept a donation of $61, um, from Stop &amp; Shop Blooming for Good Program.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Doug Mogul, aye?
Jason Perone, aye.
Okay, next we have a letter from Randy Brown, who's here tonight on Zoom. Um, December 14th, the town opened bids for the Klein Road Culvert Replacement Project. 14 bids were received, which are summarized on the following table. Low bidder, Western Earthworks, was determined to be the lowest qualified bidder with a bid price of $429,363, including alternate one. Funding for this project was secured by a 526.
What's going on here? Yeah, your, your sound went out, Doug.
Yeah, Carl, can you hear me? Because I-
I can hear you, but it's like it's Lisa's, Lisa's, uh, muted us.
I think the owl went off.
Oh, there's Randy. I can hear Randy. I can hear Carl.
Yeah, because the three of us are remote.
Zoom, anybody on Zoom?
We can hear each other, but I can see Doug, we can see Doug talking.
Right.
I think, I think the owl is not working.
Right, so I mean, Ben is trying to send him a message. I saw Ben's thing.
Well, the picture's been freezing up as well.
Yeah, it has. I noticed that.
Yeah, I just sent him a message. I don't know if you got it.
Me too.
I'm using my, uh, my visual cues. Hey Lisa, your screen went dark and you're, um, you got muted. We, we don't have sound. Yeah, so I don't know if it's something that is going on in the room or if it's something on your side.
No. What about now?
Could you, you're the only human being that we can communicate with?
I, I did. I walked over there and they, Doug was up on the screen. Just two seconds.
Oh yeah, we're all on the screen.
Yeah.
The only people that can talk to each other are all of us on remote. Everybody on remote can talk to each other, but nobody can talk to the room.
That doesn't make sense because I'm not muted.
I just sent a message.
He's looking into it.
Okay. All right, so see what you can do to help him out. Thanks, Lise.
Bye bye.
Bye. Well, I guess we're all just gonna have to have some of, uh-
So how was everybody's holiday?
We're gonna have to have some of the popcorn that the moderator brought to the meeting. Oh, wait a minute, we're not there.
Randy, I don't know if I can ask you now or not. I've never heard of Western Earthworks.
I had not either.
Aye. Actually, yeah, a smaller company.
That I'm not familiar with.
No, they haven't been in Southwick.
Where are they based out of?
Up in the Berkshires. I forget. I want to say Great Barrington, maybe.
Okay.
Somewhere in that area.
Fine, that's, that's good.
Yeah.
I mean, anybody, anybody around here in those areas that are building roads that have been around long enough?
Yep, now the references checked out.
Did Ty &amp; Bond work with them on any other projects or?
They did. They ra- they did one last year with, with, this year with, or last year with them.
Okay, so that's good. So they're known then. They're a known quantity.
Yeah.
And that answers our question.
So can you hear us now, Carl?
Yes, I can, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
We were looking for the popcorn that the moderator had in the meeting.
We were watching Randy and Jason having a great time while we were signing back in. So I was calling on Randy if he wanted to speak on the MVP Grant Award to, uh, Earthworks. Did I have that right? Western Earthworks.
Yeah, you read off the letter. I think it had a most of details. Um, 14 bids is great. We love to see that number. Um, very competitive numbers and I think as a result, I think I noted in the letter that I'm hopeful we'll have some money left over for us. Because this is an MVP project, there is still a local match that's required. 25% of the project has to come from local funds. So it set some funds aside, uh, last year, uh, for this project. So Earth, uh, they have not worked with us in the Town of Southwick in the past, but they, the references did check out. Our consultant has worked with them and, uh, they did a good job for them last year on a project in, in Massachusetts, so.
Where are they based?
Uh, I, I believe Great Barrington or in that area. Somewhere in the Berkshires.
Florence, Mass.
Oh, okay, even closer, Northampton there.
That's Northampton.
Yep. That's right.
A very impressive website with a lot of new equipment.
Okay, so I need a motion to award the bid for Klein Road Culvert Project, including Amendment One, for, uh-
It's alternate one, right?
Alternate one, sorry. To Western Earthworks.
You have that motion, sir?
Second.
Doug Mogul, aye?
Jason Perone, aye.
Diane Gale, aye.
Okay.
That's the longest bid reviewed so far.
That was ever. And plus they had a grand old time while we were gone, so.
We did.
So we have a letter here from Lynn Blair, Director of the Southwick Public Library, that she is asking for approval to deposit $13.17 in her gift account as a donation from Donna Boldrini to purchase a book in memory of Francis Albro. So I need a motion to, um, deposit that generous gift into their gift account.
Uh, we'll make that motion.
Second.
Doug Mogul, aye?
Jason Perone, aye?
We're up to new business, I think. Carl, do you have any new business?
Uh, no, sir. Happy New Year.
Apparently we gotta pay our internet bill. That's what knocked us off last time. Um, we gotta get switched over to that, uh, Whip City Fiber stuff. New business?
Nothing for me.
Yeah, Doug, Brian was, there was a person that Brian had designated as a point person to work with our people, so we'll have to get them back on that one.
Correct. Jason, new business?
None, sir. We've got plenty of old business to deal with.
We do. Okay. Old business first. Let's, let's work the list. Police Chief Internal Recruitment Process, when we last met.
I don't understand any information.
Yes? And that's what's in our folder, correct?
Correct.
Yep, Jason dropped it off last week.
Further discussion? Yes.
Jason, you wanna start with what you have?
As I stated before, you know, um, there's a lot of departments, even departments that are going, um, internally, that have started to use the assessment center. Um, it, it allows for people to, uh, come in. As you guys got, you've got the, uh, the, uh, rough proposal as to what I was looking for. Um, it would involve, uh, former police chiefs coming in, um, just providing, uh, questions and orally interviewing the candidates that we have. Uh, it would, you know, what I would like about it, I like about it is that it, it helps us establish, uh, strengths and weaknesses of all the candidates we have, depending on how many we have, which can, you know, help us focus on, you know, what we're really looking for in a, in a police chief. Like I said, we've got plenty of great qualified candidates. I'm hoping we get a, a, a large, you know, a large handful of these guys that, uh, want to move forward and, uh, into the police chief's position. I just think it allows for a, uh, again, a different point of view, um, a different set of eyes to take a look at things from the outside and say, hey, these are some of the issues that we see. Um, and it just gives that, that, that angle to it. I had a couple other things that I wanted to bring into it, but.
Did you happen to get any information from any of the other ones that you had asked about?
No, none of the others. I, I'm assuming it's probably Holiday. I, I would like to think that, but, um, the Commonwealth Police Legacy, um, they've been great. Uh, we, I had a conversation with, uh, the owner's, uh, wife, who is his administrative, is, uh, office manager and assistant. Uh, and she was, uh, you know, very good conversation and she said, you know, they do this quite a bit. Um, they, and they've had good results with it.
Do you know if they do it in person or remotely?
I, I, I know they do in person. I'm assuming in this day and age, we could probably do it remotely as well. But I, you know, mine was based on having a, you know, a face-to-face across the, the table. That's what I initially had asked for. I, I mean, I could ask that aspect of it, but, uh, you know, in my opinion, based on what they came back with and the, you know, the, the possible fee, I think it just gives a, a, a good opportunity to set a precedent uh, and, and, uh, a process in place, uh, to us, you know, assess our guys.
Is the 29.50, is that per candidate or is that?
No, that would be the entire, uh, lock, stock and barrel. Again, this is, you know, that's what they gave me. I, I mean, I'd have to look into and make sure that would, um, include everything, but I don't, you know, of course, the costs and fees may vary and differ, but, um, I can find out the exact, I, I asked them for specifics and I said, what, this is what I want. How much is it gonna cost me so I could present this to you guys? And this is what they gave me and, and that's what we have for now. I, I think it's a small price to pay to, um, really get a good deal.
That depends on that answer. Is it per candidate or is it if we sell?
No, I know that for a fact. This is the, this is across the board. It would, for everybody, the only thing that might be different would be, I don't know if there's any travel fees or anything like that, but like I said, I asked for a full accounting of what I wanted, which would be to be multiple uh, candidates interviewed in an oral board and that was what, this is what we were given, or what I was given.
Okay, this doesn't indicate what their grading metrics are, how they're going to evaluate or score, and it doesn't indicate what they're going to give back to us to evaluate.
Based on my discussions with them, um, I can click, uh, talk to them a little bit more. It, like, like, you know, like Mr. Mogul and you, we all said the last meeting, we're not in any rush right at the moment. Um, I can get some of these clarifications for you. I mean, if you want to put down specific questions that were not covered in this, uh, proposal, but by all, you know, gladly, whatever you need to get answers to, um, send them to me and I can bring these back forward to the folks at CPI or CPL and, uh, get some more answers.
And I guess I'd like you to follow up with the others that you contacted and see what they provide.
Yeah, I can try. Uh, you know, I sent out the emails. I haven't heard back from anybody. I actually left a couple phone calls. And let me see if I can find the emails that I have. Um-
For myself, I'd also like to know where the three chiefs are from that would be doing the evaluation to know how they relate to our community in what they're asking.
Okay, I could actually set that as a parameter, um, for that as well. You know, based on a, you know, similar town size makeup and department, uh, personnel. Let's see here if I can find the other companies that I had in my email.
And the last comment I have is the, uh, topics that they are, that I, I've spent the last few weeks reviewing other interviews across the state, large and small, actually not even just this state. Uh, these are all the same questions that I would be asking and, um, they are the same questions that I have seen asked. I have questions that even aren't in this group of um, considerations. So again, I'm not really sure what else we would get out of this at this point. That's just my-
I, I'm, yep, I'm listening.
Or I still am on it. I don't know what this would provide us that we aren't going to flesh out ourselves. But, but if you can get a, at least one more to, you know, see what they're gonna offer.
Okay, I can do it. You know, there's MPI and I also reached out to Hand for Hand, um, consulting and, um, I'm not sure if I got one back from Shift. Yeah. No, I just, the MPI, I sent the emails to them and I sent the email to Hand for Hand. Both of those are heavily involved in the civil service, they, also the the study material for exams and whatnot. So, and that was, that stuff just got done, so that, that could be part of it as well. So I'll reach out to them again.
Is MRI in your list at all?
I did not use them. I didn't, I didn't reach out to them, no. Just because we're already dealing with them on another aspect, I, I just felt, uh, I didn't want to involve that right at this time. If, if you'd like me to reach out to MRI, I have no problem with that.
Asking. I just figured they've already done a little bit of background and met with the current chief.
But that's a very, very valid point, sir. Um, you know, and like I said, I know with Diane's questions, I did do some, uh, question, asking around over the, you know, I know we didn't go outside for these positions, but I know with, uh, our current fire chief, our previous fire chief, our deputies, we did use some assessment centers and, and, uh, you know, I, like I said, to me, I, I would like to have an outside group of experts assess this and give us their valid opinion as well. Um, you know, and rely on a, a little bit more, uh, professional information rather than just what we see and what we deal with.
This is a little bit different than an assessment center, correct?
Yes, this is not a full assessment center. This is just an oral board where they would assess the candidates. We're not, I'm not looking for a specific scoring process. I would just set the parameters. This is what we as a board are looking for, um, for you to focus on as far as what we want to ask, what you to ask, and that would give us another set of data to go over during our discussion as to who we decide to select for chief. Again, this is just something I brought forward. If the, the board decides we don't want to do it, I'm, I'm okay with that, uh, but.
I think there's, sorry, Jason, I mean, interrupt.
Okay, I'm all set.
So I think with a couple outstanding questions, we can continue to come back to that. I think we, uh, Carl's still there, right? You can still hear us, Carl?
What is your question, Doug?
That you can still hear us. So, thank you. And, um, no, I think what I, I, with the looming budget though, I would like to try to start this process. So even if this becomes part of the process- So even if this becomes part of the process, integral to the process, I think we can start, we can start the process by asking for applications and have a date, a date in the near future to get those in. And then, then we can continue to meet and decide what we're going to do with this and then decide what the rest of the process is going to look like as we go. So, does anybody want to take a look at a calendar? Cause there's one right there.
I mean, obviously the board could decide what it wants to do in terms of an internal posting. It's going to reference a job description. Will you be modifying the job description or will you exercise your latitude to amend it at a future date unilaterally?
I like the sounds of the second thing, but yeah. B sounds really good. And so I would just get a, I think we should get a posting and then put a date around it. Here we are on the second of January. I, I don't know what, what would you think would be for an internal posting? Is the 19th too soon? Friday, the 19th of January? You've got one holiday in there, right?
Well, I want to be clear on what the board wants within the language of the posting. I don't want us thinking that we know what we want in that language right now and all of a sudden we go and post it in the three, the three of you didn't agree on what you want in it. So that's why we gotta, we gotta refine the posting and then we can set the date of when you want.
That's what I was just about to say when Carl said that, is that we should sit down, look at the previous one, see if there's anything that.
I did provide that to the board several weeks ago.
Agree upon that and then go forward with a date.
Okay, so let's carry that for our agenda for next week to get that reviewed and we'll cover it in, under old business. Unless you're prepared to go through that tonight for the posting.
Do you have that with you, Jason?
What's that, Diane?
The posting from 2018?
I do not have that with me right now, no.
Okay, then I guess we'll.
So we'll carry that next Monday. We are meeting next Monday.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. And then, so let's take our note. Internal posting and while we're at it, the job description while we're at it.
Well, you have time. Again, you can certainly put wording in your posting that says, see attached current job description. Document under consideration for revision, subject to change. Cause for the most part, it's going to be consistent with chapter 4197A, which is the strong chief law. And it's a non-civil service position, so it's a contract position. Which would be pursuant to chapter 41108O.
For those keeping track at home. Gotcha. Okay.
I'm only familiar with the N one.
Any further discussion on the police chief internal recruitment process at this time?
Not for me.
Jason?
Not right now. No, sir. We've covered what I wanted to for today.
Okay. SRO requests with school district. I think we should, we're going to carry this under old business, but there's not much of an update on that this week. Since we haven't really discussed anything since. Board evaluations and appointed progress.
I'm happy to tell you that Carl and Nadine had the first draft to put their HR and whatever other brush they want to put on it. Carl thought it was extensive. I call it comprehensive.
On New Year's Day nevertheless, Diane.
I have been working very hard. I told you.
No doubt about that. No doubt about that.
I believe Nadine used the term thorough. I think that sounds about right for Diane.
So that's the first pass at it. And I have, you don't have it, but I have supplemented all the appendixes with, with what I have available. But that, that's just stuff off our own website for the most part.
Yeah, and, and we'll go through that review process. So I'm not promising we'll have it, you know, to you Diane, within the next week. You know, it's going to take a while to look through that.
Of course.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
You got the easy part, though.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move right past the HSIC because we covered that earlier and I saw that we had town council on the line. So. He is still there. Happy New Year, counselor.
How is everyone?
Very well. How are you? There he is.
Hi, Ben.
Good.
How are you, Carl?
Good to see you again, Ben.
Good to see you, Jason. Diane.
How are you?
Okay, so I think we have, sorry. So we have a packet of posting for it to stuff of send to the attorney general first, right? So that's been sent, correct?
Yes. Yep, Mr. Chairman. Ben, I'll be looking at is the town clerk's office, Jessman's own and Michelle, before she left, worked with John Goddard and all the necessary documents were sent to the AG's office for the review of the bylaws and the other zoning bylaws that were voted at town meeting.
Perfect. So the next step is Diane pointed out, and it was pointed out well in the the webinar that we attended and that, thank you Attorney Foyle also sent us a copy of the prezo from. There's certain things that we need to be doing as a town in order to prepare to accept any kind of application for a host community agreement. And I had read some of what Diane had sent over as well. Basically, we need to have a page on our webpage that just says, if you're going to apply for a license in the town of Southwick, click here. And then it has a couple of things on it. One is a one pager that says, these are the simple steps you need to take. Probably need to have them in a couple of different languages. And then, and then a link to the application and then whatever other qualifications. And then I'll let you explain it in more detail if you'd like, Diane.
I hadn't thought about the other languages, but yeah. I think I had highlighted the key points which were, we just have to tell them the status of the vote with the dates so that they understand that we're in process putting this together. Whatever the application form and format is going to be, what our selection criteria is going to be. How to apply roadmap to, and I've looked at a number of other towns, as I mentioned. Many, many, many. It's really hard to find and that is one of the things that we can't do. We can't like bury it. It has to be easily found. And then a specific roadmap on all the steps they have to take and where each one is slotted in. I think we can follow many of the other towns, the way they've done it. And then the, and then I also gave you, so I gave you what my suggestion was on how to word it and you know, you guys can review that, see if you agree with it, want to change anything up on it. And then we also have to have that diversity statement. And I took both Greenfield and, who else did I say? Greenfield and Salem.
Well, Ben, that doesn't have to be in place until, what, is it May 1st, 2025? Is that what?
That's the deadline, but we should put it up there.
Yeah, we definitely should get this out in place.
Tell them it's in process.
You know.
Yeah, I absolutely agree with Diane. It's not due until May of 2024, but and I think you guys attended the same webinar that, that I've watched as well. The fines won't be instituted if, if any, until 2025.
That's, that was my confusion, yep.
So Ben, based on the information that Diane had put together in this draft document that I forwarded on to you today, can you take this and refine it so that, and then send us something to be loaded on our front page of our webpage so that we can at least start the process of complying?
Absolutely. And, and I think Diane's suggestion of having a separate tab that, that talks about, or a separate page that maybe you can just get, get a link to. I don't know all the technical aspects of it. I think that's going to be beneficial too. And I'll provide some of the other towns that I've seen that have done the same thing. That basically says it's in process and contact X person at town to see, or to get further information and look back to this page again in the future because we're continuing to update it.
Which is basically what I said.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yep.
Right. And then the, the equity policy. Trying to fine tune one of those. And Diane, I agree with you that there was some, it's not as easy to find as it should be for many in the municipalities. Salem's was probably the easiest. Greenfield was a little bit more difficult. There are others that are out there that are a little bit more difficult as well. But something that we can try to put together and the CCC is supposed to provide us with some model and, and models and guidance with regard to those policies. But as we've seen throughout this process, it's been a little difficult and they've been a little behind in, in what they thought they were going to roll out and when they were going to be able to roll it out. But we'll continuously update that as well as we get more information with regard to it.
Yes, I sense by looking at the news stories, they have their hands full with their other litigation issues at the board level.
Correct.
Salem and Greenfield, a lot of theirs were verbatim on both of them. So as I said, certainly there was a template that they.
We don't need every invento wheel, right?
So that's, I, I took that and on the ones you have, number five, there was just a on, on, I don't remember whose it was, which one of them, but they had fees associated with the application. And we haven't discussed fees yet. So, an application fee.
And, and, and just to, to follow up on that a little bit, and I think it was, was really talked about during the webinar. Are the HCAs, the host community agreements and the community impact fees that were previously negotiated with regard to marijuana facilities? And the difficulty that municipalities have and trying to enforce those. Doug and I talked about that quite a bit when we discussed the, the existing one. So what we need to do too is be mindful of that and how the town will address that. And although there's no waiver that's been produced yet by the CCC, I believe that we can fashion our own to the extent that we get someone in before the, the CCC promulgates their forms in order to comply with the, the new law. So that's also on the radar.
Information there for us, what not to do. So I don't see any problem with that at all.
Just, just as an example, there were 48 communities that I searched for and I found probably enough documents for maybe 10.
Diane, you talk, that's one of the things that in my most, a lot of towns have just deferred to simplification and really as little regulation as possible. And that's, you know, it's, I mean, obviously for simplification and ease of use, that's great, but you know, there, there needs to be some sort of standards. That's for sure.
I know applicants can't find it, so.
Well, there's, there, some of the places don't even have it listed. You're right. I, they're impossible to find.
I'm all for keeping it very simple. I hadn't even thought of an application fee. First of all, so that's another topic of discussion. But I think we just need to put, we can start working on that, that little section of the webpage so that we can draw people's attention to it. But I think what we also need to work on is part of this is the process. What should be on that application? And then what we're going to use as criterion because well, we already have four people that have sent us letters or emails of interest that they want to be that. And we have two licenses in play. And that's subject to planning board approval that a whole separate process under, under their jurisdiction, under the zoning that was just passed. But under the, the select board is the host community agreement granting entity or negotiating entity. So we would, and I just, I think the host community agreement, it's probably, Ben will laugh, a one pager, but once he gets involved, it'll be a three or four pager, but it's a one pager because there's not going to be an impact fee. And it's, it's going to just say, you know, we're doing this, this, that and the other. And it's going to be fairly boilerplate. Much like the one that we did with the grow operation was fairly boilerplate. And we, I think we even saw the writing on the wall for impact fees back then. So I, I just think we need to, we need to be upfront with potential applicants of what that process looks like and what we're looking for and what we're going to evaluate the applicants on in order, if, if we're going to give out to, and then, you know, the you know, with the rest, taking in the rest of the social equity requirements, et cetera, that were in the, in the CCC's guidelines. That's really where we're at, I think. So I think the webpage part is, or you know, the kind of the simplification part is easy. We have to develop that application. And, you know, for all the CCC telling us that they're going to give us all this pre-example stuff, they're not anywhere near ready to do it. So we're kind of.
I heard in March at the.
And, you know, we did rush to town meeting to, you know, a special to get this on the books, to get this going. So I don't, I don't want to be the rain delay. I want to just keep going with the process so that as soon as the attorney general comes back with their review, that we're able to process applications under the bylaw that we figure is going to be okay. You know, once we have that in hand. So I don't want to be, you know, do this serially and say, okay, we'll wait for the attorney general. And then we'll discuss what our process is going to be, and then we'll put a process together because that could be May. By the time the CCC does their thing, it could be, where are we, January? Could be March before we hear back from the AG. You know, I don't want to be, you know, we could have waited for the annual town meeting then if that was the case and waited for all this to go. So I think we need to just keep the process moving. And, and just do our stuff. And I think it's, you know, that the webpage piece, I think is simple. I think we need to talk more about what an application looks like. You know, Diane had done a lot of work on what that, what some of the, what some of the objectives are for the town in reviewing a potential applicant. And, you know, I have my own criteria and I think that I'd like to incorporate it. I'm sure Jason does. I'm sure Diane does. As to what those, what you would like to see. You know, we, we're generally on the business of picking winners and losers. But granted, there's going to be more applicants than there are licenses by the definition of the law. So we are going to have to try to pick the two strongest, subject to the rest of everything else, the two strongest applicants to, to construct a facility in the town of Southwick.
So, may I?
Absolutely.
So the easy part being the webpage, because I already did it. Ben has to just come back and edit this, but would you and Jason want to edit as well?
I'd like to. The one you presented to us, Diane?
Yeah.
I didn't have a lot to, I mean, I, my take on it.
I'm just trying to bring it back up. I didn't see, to me, like you said, that's the, the easy point. I, I think like Doug said, we should get that. Once Ben looks over it, make sure we don't have anything that we can't have in there, contradicts itself or anything. That should go up. I'm, I'm fine with it the way it is. You did a great job.
Can I suggest if you have anything you would like to add? You sent it to Ben?
Yep.
And then when Ben sends it back, it's the final.
Sure.
And then I will take that and get that on the website?
Yes. Sure.
Okay. And then on the host community agreement, I also have a couple of other communities that I had found that are recent. I can share with all of you and you'll see what's in those, what's not. I also have a number of towns that have their kind of roadmap. I'll just share that with you guys. And then we can put our heads together with all of that. And I don't know if you guys have found anything else either.
No, I just, I did, I pulled the same stuff you did.
Yeah. You were very thorough. So if we went, you had already been.
You haven't seen all of these. Do you have any other towns that you've looked at, Jason?
Uh, what did, I did, um, what did I look at? I looked, you've got what, Somerville? I looked, you've got what, Somerville?
I'll, I'll share mine, I'll, I'll send mine to Carl. He could distribute to you guys. And then if you've got any others, do the same, Jason, after you see what I've got, right?
Yeah, I just, I didn't print a lot of the stuff off. I just was reviewing it, so, just for ideas.
All right, so I'll share what you don't have, and we'll go from there. And I will take care of this once we get it back to Ben.
Right, but the more important thing now, Ben, is for you to look at that other draft language you already got today so that we can do that initial posting to cover ourselves, okay?
Right, the one that Diane's talking about, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we gotta make sure we, we want to get that loaded on through Jim. And if we get it to put on, you know, the webpage or Channel 15 and all those different mechanisms and then post it, just so that we're covered from that point of view.
Right. Sounds good.
Okay.
Anything else on the topic of cannabis while we're here?
I am all set, sir.
Okay. Me too.
Great.
Anything else we need, Attorney Quill?
No, I think that's good for now.
Great. All right.
All right.
We'll continue, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
All right. Bye.
Have we heard back from the Police Department yet regarding the hunting bylaw proposal?
Not yet, but I know he's working on it because I spoke to him last week and he was working on it.
Great. Just want to make sure we're continuing to move along. Land license, we'll talk about later. MDL, I should ask Ben while he was here. Town Administrator Recruitment Panel.
Got off the hook, didn't he?
Yeah, he did, that's my bad. Don't worry, we'll be, we'll all be talking to him. Town Administrator Recruitment Panel Meetings, Job Description. There was something in my email late this afternoon I need to process, which I will do forthwith. T-Mobile Hometown Grants Application Review Authorization and Pursuit.
As you stated, I'm going to reach out to the Park and Rec. And I've been doing some research on the couple of items that came up when I was talking with former COA Park and Rec Director Sullivan. Like the big, the big one is that sunshade. I'm actually trying to speak to a couple of the companies around here that do those types of things, just to get some idea of what we're looking at for a cost. And again, I'm going to say again, anybody who has any other ideas, please come forward. I, unfortunately, as I informed Chief Landis, it can't be used to help us build our boathouse. But there are several other projects that are in the works that we could possibly use. I know parking is an issue, and we're going to be building pickleball courts that are going to need additional parking, probably, especially the ones at Town Hall. So there's, there's opportunities to fund some of that with that money as well. So once I get a valid project, I'm going to be submitting that application. I'm just waiting to get something to go forward with.
Thank you. And Diane, the next one is Board and Committee Onboarding and Duty Statement. Is that part and parcel what we discussed earlier? Thank you. And you have the ABCC coming into town, Carl?
Yep, they're going to be coming in and meeting with Sergeant Kruck and Lisa, and will be double checking all of our doc, you know, listings of licenses. And they're going to be double checking with what their records look like. So that's going to prove to be beneficial to all the new people holding these roles.
And I think if it's okay with the rest of the board, I would like to continue our meet and greet sessions that we started at the end of last year. And I think we can ask Lisa to put a couple on for the next several meetings to just come in and the, you know, the appointed managers to come in, or the owner, either one, and just introduce themselves to the board and have a little discussion.
Absolutely.
Any objection?
Nope.
Nope. Is there, she's going to want to know from you which particular ones you're interested in.
We'll, we'll pick them at random. I don't want to, I don't want to appear to be calling on anyone in particular, so we'll go.
Other ones can make it up.
Yeah, we'll, we'll start sending out some notes. I'll, I'll confer with Lisa and we'll get that figured out.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No problem, Mr. Steinhardt. Discussion and Approval of Town Clerk Internal Job Description and Posting.
Yep, you had that at your previous meeting with all the other background materials of how it had been pulled out from a combined job description. So Kim had done that, and that was the draft. And there was also the inputs from Michelle, who was vacating the position. So all those documents were provided to you in the last week or so.
Correct. Discussion?
I have one question. Responsible for the direction and supervision of all department activities employees, are the employees also splitting between Town Clerk and Treasurer? Are they the same employees?
No, I think that part of that contemplation by the Select Board was that the, they're going to be in separate physical places. So, because remember, the floor plan's going to change.
Yeah.
Right now, I mean, they may end up cross covering each other, but that's part of the, the consultant who was reviewing that, Eric Kinsver, with Laura's office, and they have to come forward with something because that's going to be part of the budget document changes also.
Okay, so the physical employees will want to shift.
Yeah, so there's going to be, it's going to be a segregation. And, and again, from an audit controls point of view, Diane, that is really what you want. You need to make sure that you, you do have segregation. Because that's, that's just a normal, yes, there's an expense that goes with it, but that is just the process that you have to make sure that you have the appropriate protections and audit controls in place.
So those other employees, their duties may, their job descriptions may change as well.
Right, well, right now that it's a union job description for some of them. The, the assistant statutorys, those can change too, but those don't have to go through a collective bargaining process. So anything that would have to go through a collective bargaining process, Kim will have to review that from a labor relations point of view, along with Nadine.
Okay. All right, so I don't have any, I just wanted to clarify that.
Why we're here.
I don't have any.
So I, does the board have a comfort level with A, the content of the job description for this point in time, which can be amended in the future because it's not a, a, you know, a negotiated document with a bargaining unit at the department head level? So that's number one. And number two, did you, what type of a price point did you want to put for a range on the position? Because those are the two important elements that you're going to have to contain in an internal posting.
That I have no information on.
I would want to do some, you know, comparisons to local communities and especially where, because if we're going from one type of position to another, the way it was set up, I definitely would like to do some parity studies before we set a price point.
Because your treasure collector position is what? That's 76, Doug, 77? And it's, in addition to that, it's, it's including a stipend. So, you know, we're going to have to look at what the range is for that because it'll depend. But again, if you're looking at this as an internal posting, you know, you, you don't have to go and do a full on parity comparability study because really your, your opportunity here is to try to see what, you know, opportunities of upward mobility there are for existing people. So where it's a step up for them, but you're not going to the marketplace and getting somebody who's got 10 years of experience as a standalone town clerk somewhere else.
Understood.
I think we should be in, we shouldn't be, it should be in a reasonable number. Jason's correct. I mean, I don't know if we need to do a full blown.
No, not a full blown study, yeah. I, I just research on, yeah. I mean, do it, you know, go out myself and get some ideas.
And, and we might, you know, we'll see what Kim has under that category for those numbers. And if need be, we can do a survey, and Nadine can do it through the HR peer group.
Okay. That sounds good.
All right.
Okay. So do we, we're okay with the job description?
Yep, yeah, I was, there's no issues with it.
So what do you need, Carl, in order to get this job posted? Because we do want to, again, you need the salary range, though.
Yeah, so that's, and I'm glad we have this, this first part worked out. Now it's a matter of just agreeing on what the other thing looks like, and hopefully we can give you that information for your meeting next week.
Okay, great.
There are how many employees right now?
In that office?
In that office.
The only question I would have, since we're talking about it before we go on, is where are we as far as figuring out how we're going to change the layout and who's going where and what we're going to need for offices?
Well.
Where are we?
We are still looking into that. I'm talking to some members of the Finance Committee who have to be involved, the Building Inspector, the Facilities Manager. So they know they're going to be coming to be part of that process, but they hadn't, and they are developing their own ideas independently, but we have not done that as a full sit down group yet because with the holidays, everybody has been all over the place.
That I understand, but we're talking about possible additions to, you know, possible staff additions if we're separating offices.
Oh, that was, but that, but that's always been known, Jason.
Oh, I, yeah, I just, but I, I want to know what, you know, are we looking at that X amount of people? Because as Mr. Rogan said, with the budget coming up, we're going to, obviously going to need to know that.
Yeah, there was at least, you know, you're going to be looking at a minimum of, you know, three people per office in a, in terms of a department head, an assistant statutory person below them, because they have to have the same authority. And then a probably support administrative person from a bargaining unit classification.
Okey doke.
So we're just chatting about, we probably need to know how many are going to stay with each manager in order to set that salary where it needs to be too.
Well, I would, I would just predicate it on a minimum of two other full timers below them. And that could be, you know, that could end up, that could also end up taking the form of some part timers too, especially when you're going through cycles of high number of traffic count for the different commitments and the billings that go off for taxes and water bills.
That's all I had.
Okay. Any other old business?
I'm still waiting for budget estimates back from the outside architect for the Town Hall Roof and HVAC, because he was going to provide us some estimates for the potential CPC application for the masonry and some of the, look around it. So I, I've shown Jason and Diane the need for that project, and I've had discussions with the CPC, but they're just waiting for us to submit an application. Until I get that information from that architect, we're not in a position to put it in front of the Select Board, to look at it, to okay that application to be submitted to the CPC Board. But you've all gone around and seen the building, you've seen what it needs, and this is the next logical step to do it, and it would be an appropriate project from that fund source.
Absolutely. We just need the numbers to back up the application.
Yes, sir.
You can't just send an application to CPC with some amorphous dollars and hope that they're going to approve it, right?
Yes.
We have new, old business?
Nothing else.
Jason?
Nothing, sir.
Anyone else want to last crack at the Select Board before we go into exec session?
At the beginning of the year.
Oh, you got a whole year to do it now. Chief, you good? Moderator? Chairman? Careperson? Anyone online? Carl, we are going to exec session, right?
Yes.
Okay.
You have Labor Counsel. That's online.
Oh, there's Kim. Okay, so we are going to go into executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21, 2 and 3, and Chapter 214. Section 1B Labor Counsel, Litigation Matters and Strategy for Collective Bargaining with Police Union Coalition Fire, IAAF, DPW, Non-Union Staff, and Clerk Union, UPSU. And we will not be reconvening. And we move to go into executive session to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel and not reconvene in open session. The Chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the body and not reconvene in open session. Move to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. And the Chair moved to go into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and to not reconvene in open session. Move to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, and that the Chair declared that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the body and not reconvene in open session. And very important, Chapter 214, Section 1B. A person shall have a right against unreasonable substantial or serious interference with their privacy. The Superior Court shall have jurisdiction and equity to enforce such right and in connection therewith to award damages. So we're going to go into executive session, folks, so, hang on.